Go ahead and call up tonight's meeting to order, if you would. Please stand and join me in a pledge. I pledge.
One nation, two of the black United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the day of justice.
Pam, what'd you do? A roll call, please.
Mayor, time.
Here.
Alderman Dobbs.
Here.
Alderman Peggy.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Huey.
Here.
Alderman Edna.
Here.
Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Alderman Front.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will look for approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Again.
If they have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will move us along tonight. We do have a personal appearance. We have Matt Clark and Christina Fulford from the St. Genevieve YMCA, and they'd like to come and talk about the transition and what that's going to look like moving forward. So have you guys come step forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Aldermen and women, thank you for having us.
My name's Matt Clark. I'm with YMCA. I've been there for about 25 years and have had the privilege to spend a lot of time here in St. Jen and learn a lot over the last several months. And Chris is going to talk here in just a second, but we've had some updates for you that we thought we'd share that's kind of relevant to some of the transition and the pieces that are going to be coming forth. I thought I'd start with the staff. We're very fortunate that the staff are responding very, very well. We've been spending a lot of time transitioning them from an HR perspective, training in our systems, all those things. We're very pleased with some very high-quality staff at the center. So that's going really well. The other thing I wanted to share was some of you may have seen or participated in a community needs assessment survey that went out about a month ago. And this was really important to us to hear from the community, what they were looking for and wanting from us as an organization. And some of the highlight, high-level overview pieces. We had 585 participants in the survey. Of those 585, 41% were ages 35 to 54. 33% were ages 56 to 74. So that's important because that's kind of the voice of who's speaking to us in these survey results. 79% of the respondents have lived in the county for 10 years or more, which was our highest option to choose on the instrument. Favorites that they really talked about, favorite parts they liked. Library was way up there, and we see that. And we're working with Sean and having a, we're looking forward to that partnership continuing. Youth sports, fitness, and the pools were top on the amenities side. Or I'm sorry, on the parts, their favorite parts. On the amenities, the respondents really enjoyed fitness, senior social space opportunities, Top Watch, or we call it Child Watch, being included in their membership, group exercise, and then again, the pools. Their interests were fitness, Group X, senior wellness. And then an interesting one that was unique was in youth and family. In addition to the Child Watch and health and wellbeing, homeschool programs were requested at a high rate in the response, which is great because we have a history of working with various homeschool networks. So we look forward to exploring those opportunities. They told us their, ranked their community challenges or told us what they saw as challenges within the community. And 51% said activities for youth outside of school hours was something that they really were looking to the why to try to address and join other community services, of course, but to try to address some of those needs. Chronic disease was 38%, and then right behind that was adult fitness programs at 37%. So that's just some of the high level of what we heard from the community. And then I'm going to ask Chris to come up and talk a little bit about some of our plans in the near future.
Yeah, so, good evening. I'm Chris Fulford, and it's been a pleasure. I have only been here, I think it's less than a month, but I've been welcomed with open arms. And I just want to say it's a wonderful community. I'm really excited to be a part of it and to really help lead the center into its next chapter. So Matt kind of went over the survey results. And what we hope you see as we step forward, the changes that we'll make, are they're all based upon what we hear from the community. So everything that we do from this point forward will really be leaning on, what does the community need of us, one of us? What are the things they feel like we're doing well? And what are the things that they hope that we adjust or bring back? So some of those first things are going to be Child Watch. So that used to be a service, and we're going to bring that back. So we're looking at what's currently the yoga room and converting that into a Child Watch Center. So we hope to have that moving forward, literally within probably 30 days of working on that and getting that pushed forward. So by the time we get to the new year, that we have a whole new Top Watch that'll be in our Child Watch Services. We've already started work on the group exercise schedule. So there was a lot of requests for expanding the amount of opportunities we have for group exercise. And we've already looked at for December, we're going to be able to add a couple of classes to the schedule for December. And then we hope to just keep growing that as we grow instructors and get new people and do certifications. And part of that will include the potential renovation of one of the rooms on the lower level that would allow a larger group exercise studio, taking those two meeting rooms and turning them into a large group exercise studio, which will also affect the one of the items that you heard about in the survey, which is the senior programming. Because we can really fit a lot more people in for Silver Sneakers classes, Cheer Yoga type of programs. If we move down to that lower level, we can fit more people in there. So, and then in addition to that, we're looking at providing access to the sports complex. So Progress Sports Complex, as of December 1st. We're working on all the details, but as of the 1st of December, we're actually going to open that up for pickleball. So pickleball will move over there in the mornings. They're very, very excited about it. They know that. We've been chatting with them. And we hope to have them over there and using that facility. So that'll get a lot of usage in there in the mornings till around 10 o'clock is roughly when they start to leave. But then we also hope to push out gym schedules. That will be up actually by the end of this week. We have an app. We're getting that app up and going. It'll have our Group X and Gym Schedules on there. So people will be able to see when they can come in and just play pickup basketball in there. Now, that facility is heavily scheduled in the evenings for games and leagues. So the pickup ball will be more towards the middle of the day at this time. But as it becomes available, when we have breaks between activities, we'll have that as well. And then, of course, we're trying to increase the value of membership. So Water Park is now included in the value package of the membership, as well as utilization of all of the YMCA's in St. Louis. And of course, Bloomsdale is part of our whole package. So it's really helping to add when you add in Progress Sports Complex, you add in the Water Park, you add in the classes. And we will be leaning into swimming lessons as well. That was also something that had bubbled up through discussion. And we hope that by the spring, we're bringing swimming lessons to the facility for youth in the community. So really pushing forward on a lot of fronts. And so far, it's going well. It's being well-received. We have a lot of good membership sales on a regular basis, day to day. So we're really happy with the progress we've had so far and look forward to continuing to expand and grow. Does anybody have any questions or anything I didn't hit on that you'd like to know?
One of the questions, well, I've got a couple of questions and stuff. One was about the Water Park and how that was going to be blended in with the membership and stuff. Because now it's on a per-use type of thing.
Yeah.
So how, how will that work out with the membership?
So if they have a membership to the St. Genevieve County YMCA, it's included. If they do not, then they'll still have to do the traditional way of purchasing a season pass or paying a day pass fee for the park.
So is that an unlimited pass then, or is it a?
It'd be under the same premise that it was before, where there's a season pass that they can purchase, kind of almost like a membership to the Water Park, or the daily fee.
Right.
So, and yeah, so the daily fee is obviously just one time, but then the season pass gives them the whole time. And then the YMCA membership, that's unlimited usage. That's as if they bought a season pass.
Okay. The other thing was, and you touched on the pickleball thing. And I know the county had provided that to that group free. Is that still the case?
So they are members. So if they're a member of the facility, then they participate in pickleball. So they don't pay an extra fee to be, to play pickleball. That's part of membership. So kind of like coming in to play pickup basketball, we don't charge for that. We don't charge extra for pickleball. It's just open to our membership base. And all of those individuals were already county.
Right. The last question and stuff was the youth hockey league.
Yes.
That was another area that was covered by the county, you know, as far as use and stuff. And I know these kids are probably not members, but how is that going to work?
So for this year, we're changing nothing. We are starting that off just as it was done before, the way that it was treated more like a rental for the facility that they were actually renting to that league. They weren't actually managing that themselves. So for this year, we're going forward with the same because it's kind of coming up quickly. But we'll be looking at all of that to make sure that everything that we're doing is in the best economic and most efficient utilizations of the facilities.
Right. Because I know, you know, those kids can't be members and stuff, and I don't know if their parents are.
Yeah, well, not all of them. So what we do with sports, and this might help to answer this a little more clearly. So like, if we're running a soccer program, members and non-members can participate in that. So there's a rate for members that's discounted, and then there's another rate for non-members that's higher. So right now, with treating hockey as a rental, their level of membership isn't relevant because they're doing that through their league. But then if at some point, and I don't want to imply that that's absolutely going to happen, but if at some point that would transition over, it would fall under our regular structure of member rates, non-member rates. We would not exclude anybody from any programming.
Okay, thanks.
I'm a senior citizen who's never going to use the Water Park. Is that a, am I paying a higher fee so other people can use the Water Park? Or do you have an option to opt out?
We don't do à la carte service just because that's part of being a membership-based facility, is that you're purchasing a membership and we're going to put as much value into that membership. So if you were to come in and say, well, I'm only going to use the fitness equipment. So I want a discount because I'm not using the track and I'm not using the pool and I'm not using, you know, the group exercise classes. We don't pull all those different pieces out in à la carte. So we really build one membership package that has the best value that hopefully no matter what pieces of it you're using, that you find that to be valuable.
The Water Park was never previously part of the community center. Has it been added on as a requirement that is part of membership?
I wouldn't say it's a requirement. It is part of the value package of membership. So we don't require you to utilize it.
You can't opt out?
No, it's part, right. So I would, I would say that it is taking the membership that was there and making it more valuable. So the individuals who were.
Did the membership price change?
Not for the individuals who are already members. But membership rates would likely increase. Well, they have already increased for the new people walking in the door. And then if we continue renovations and look at, say, we replace fitness equipment, we would grow the rates to reflect the upgrades that exist.
Talking about kind of that same situation, I have a, I'm a Medicare, you know, senior citizen also and stuff. And I have a supplemental insurance that pays for my membership. How will that work out? I mean.
So there's a couple of different supplementals that cover that. So there's like Silver Sneakers and Renew Active and Fit On. So for those programs, it's exactly the same as far as we do, we take care of those billings. So if it's one of those where they're reimbursing us for membership, nothing changes for you. So like the Silver Sneakers, they still come in, swipe their card. There's a Silver Sneakers portal that's always been up there. The same process. They come in, they swipe the card, and then we manage those billings. And then the same for the other third parties that we do, that we manage those billings. The members don't have to do anything different.
If you were eligible before, you're eligible still.
Right. Yeah, and I guess it's different by insurance companies. The one we picked just so happened to.
They all kind of align with something different. Silver Sneakers tends to be high in a lot of communities. But here, what we're seeing is Renew Active seems to be a very heavily-used one in this community.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Christina.
Yeah.
I got a question. As you know, we have a Parkinson's support meeting there. I'm not sure how it's going to affect this as far as relationship with the community center. Is there a possibility I can meet with you tomorrow morning?
I will not be in the office in the morning to do some meetings in St. Louis. I'd love to meet with you sometime next week if you're available.
Next week, just give a call.
Absolutely.
Okay, I said, honey.
Yeah.
Figure a lot.
I wouldn't expect much change though. I'll tell you, we lay, lean heavily into our community health program. So we also, the YMCA does something called Exercise for Parkinson's. So I know there's already exercise programming that's happening. So we might not need to adjust that at all. It might just feather in perfectly with our community health work.
Right. That's what we need to, for monthly meetings.
For your monthly meeting.
Okay. All right, I'll give you a call.
Absolutely, thanks.
Any other questions? Well, thank you all very much for being here and kind of running through the transition. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Next up tonight, we have our city administrators' report. David, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates. The reported your seat is updated. On number one, concrete work on Parkwood, Oakwood, Brookdale, Brentwood, and Point Base is complete as of yesterday. It's not open yet, but the concrete pour is complete. Backfill and seal will continue this weekend to next, weather permitting. Scott Street is complete. If you haven't driven it, please do so. And then Audubon Street tear out probably finished up this afternoon with paving to get underway tomorrow. You jump down to number four. I just wanted to point out that planning and zoning approved the preliminary plat presented by McBride last week. I laid that preliminary plat at your seats just for you to see. That is 137 lots. And it incorporates some of the changes that were, 135 lots. It incorporates some of the changes that were requested.
It's down from what?
Was 173 last.
What happened in 41?
If you see a large curve on Bowser Drive, they found a depression that they did not want to build over. That took away quite a few. And then they were informed by Mississippi Lime that the two existing vents that will stay cannot have a home within 100 foot of them.
What comes out of that? What comes out of a vent that you can't be within 100 feet of it?
Well, steam, noise, nothing else, but yeah. If you go to number six, I just wanted to point out the Port Authority will be holding a public hearing here at City Hall at 5:30 on December 10th to get public feedback on their application for $100,000 in federal 5311 funds.
Where is that one? Is it Perry or St. Jen County that's coming months?
Where's the meeting?
The Port Authority. Don't they switch? Don't they go back and forth between?
This is a public hearing that'll be held right here. Yeah. Number eight.
Can you go, I'm sorry, Dave. Can you go back to number four? When's final plat approval anticipated?
That'll be up to McBride. I would think they would want to get that in the next couple of months, but not positive. Number eight, one meeting this month in November. So there'll be four weeks till our next meeting on the 11th. City Hall is closed Thanksgiving and the day after, November 27th and 28th. And I added number 10 down there. I want to give you an update. We met with Joker's Paving. Cory and I to examine sanitary sewer line on Fourth Street Wednesday. They took some measurements while they were there and have agreed to make the repairs. Work will begin in two weeks.
That's the one, 300 block right there with the steel plate still?
Correct.
In two weeks, you think they'll be able to start in two weeks?
They have already scheduled a gas line relocation. And that'll be, I think, the week of Thanksgiving? Yes, two weeks. That's all I have for city administrator.
So there's that gas line relocation. I mean, or is that a fee with that, or is that?
I assume so. Spire doesn't usually do things for free, so, but I, Jokers will pay for that.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Will Jokers also pay for the street repairs? I'm sure it's going to be in the street.
This, this is their responsibility, yes.
Good.
Alderman Peggy, that plat, that changed for about 40 lots roughly because of those requirements by Mississippi Lime. So we did lose that. And that, you know, that was a negotiation between those two private parties. So we don't know really what had transpired there, but we lost that on 40-something homes because of those negotiations between those two parties. So it's kind of sad because we were going to spend that $590,000 no matter what. And so now we're spending.
25% reduction.
I'm sorry.
25% reduction.
Yeah.
I know you're looking at a big reduction and stuff, but I still think this is a much better layout. You know, but there's a lot more green space incorporated in there. And I think that'll make the whole subdivision nice, but.
There was a decision, P&amp;Z wanted to move forward with sidewalks on both sides of all the streets. So there was a thought that maybe one sidewalk around them. But there will be sidewalks on both sides.
But.
Classic, just to heads up.
It's a trade issue.
They know if it's a depression or a sinkhole.
There are sinkholes definitely on Lot 3. They took 17 core samples beyond what we had done and found this depression, and they chose not to build in that area.
Yeah, yes, so thank you. And we'll move right into community development.
Should have that reported here, yes.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Community development. If you take a look at that report, I wanted to point out a few things. It says there the next Heritage Commission meeting will be 11/17. There's nothing for the agenda, so there will be no meeting next week. The 2024 Historic Preservation Grant application, that contract is on tonight's agenda. There were five responses. Three-person committees scored them. That's part of a 60-40, or 40-60 grant. So you'll see that on tonight's agenda. You go down to planning and zoning. We'll have a public hearing later. Planning and zoning approved a guest lodging special use permit at 135 North Third. I'll mention again, they approved the preliminary plat for McBride. On the back page, I wanted to point out a few things. We've been keeping track of sidewalks and other projects going around town. The TAP grant that the county was approved for, which I thought was on track for 2026, is currently being completed. So that's the work that you see going on out there along Highway 61. I was asked last week if that will continue on to Plaza or Bowser. It 45 is right there at Parkwood, where we just put a new street in. So that's where it'll connect. So basically, once our TAP project next year for sidewalk along Fourth Street in front of the Legion, but on the other side of the street, is put in place, you'd be able to walk from here to the community center on a sidewalk.
Awesome.
Yeah. Applause is always a part of it. Yeah, thank you.
We should somehow, though, try to connect that last part, that last block of the Plaza, from First Aid Bank over, there should be a sidewalk there to get across the way into the Plaza. If it's all along that last little bit in front of like what you'd call, I guess, Tractor Supply, or even if it's just a cut-through to get right where their big sign is. Or so we need to probably finish that. That would make a huge difference for that last little bit of walking. You know, I don't think it'd be that much. It'd be a sidewalk anywhere from 10 to 20 feet or maybe the whole length down to the main entrance to the Plaza. Maybe it'd be 150 feet. I think we should look at least that last little bit to be able to look at pedestrians.
Okay.
I know it's a MoDOT thing, try to get there, but that would be.
That's my community development report.
Any questions?
Okay. And of course, we got a full lineup of staff reports tonight, with this being our only meeting in November. Next up tonight, we will have our tourism director, Aaron Smith. Rising star tourism director.
May I play your mind, everyone?
Thank you, gentlemen. Tonight, of course, I have a lengthy report because it's my year in review, but I'll try to get through this quickly. As David Bova was saying, we've secured funding for the ferry from Illinois. So they are going to match MoDOT's 88,000. It's going to be just for this year, but it makes it easier for them to apply for that funding for next year. You know, I sent some 40-plus emails out, really leveraged my sort of relationship that I'm building with the Chicago French Heritage Society. And in the acceptance letter from MoDOT saying we're excited about funding the ferry because of its cultural significance and French heritage. So I think that was a, that was a big win there. Picked the agency to carry out the UGC PR campaign. So I want to use 20,000 of my $43,000 marketing line item to run PR UGC campaign, which to get out of the lingo is basically we're inviting cool people to come to town and make content for us, basically, you know, inviting publications to come do stories on us and influencers to come and make sort of videos and content like that. I received five submissions, and I decided to, had a committee help me score the proposals. And in the end, I went with Jasper Paul out of St. Louis. That's an area where really, you know, we're working on overnight markets right now, but I think we really need to hit St. Louis hard and stay in St. Louis. This is their specialty, PR and marketing. They know all the cool kids in St. Louis. So this, you know, they've got a great lineup of content creators. And they have a St. Jen native on staff who is chomping at the bit to like really, you know, see this move the needle for St. Jen, so that's exciting.
Cool kids mean there are nobody from the Alderman's group?
No, I think you guys are all cool kids. I think it's, I think cool kids are all ages. You know, you're still, you're still a cool kid. Don't, don't short yourself, Patrick. We're producing a brochure right now. I'm really excited about this. We've needed a brochure since I've arrived. But since we've got the new branding in place, I think this is something we need to accelerate. This was on, this was part of our five-year marketing plan. It was going to cost $20,000. It's going, it's being donated by YPR Agency. That's a new local agency. And the stuff that I've seen so far looks really good. And I'll bring you guys a sample when that's ready to go. Jumping into my year in review, it's a lot of information. I want you guys to really jump in and read this, you know, in your spare time. But basically, I have my 2024 year in review. And basically, what I'm, I was trying to say is, you know, 2024 was about establishing what the community feels like or the problems in tourism. So I really, you know, wanted to get that, get, get the lay of the land here. And then this year was about building that foundation, rebuilding that infrastructure. Like I said, my job is to take out ads. That ads are supposed to push people to our website. And our website is supposed to get people here, right? It's supposed to make it easy for people to, to book a trip. Our website was a mess. And even our branding and our messaging was, was sort of a mess. And so this year, enacting year one of our five-year marketing plan, worked with McDaniels to build out a print and digital marketing plan. We used $60,000. $30,000 of that was a match from the state. And we hit six different overnight markets. I also produced a professional video commercial this year. That was thrown into that marketing plan, so they used that as content. And I think that did a great job pushing people to our website. The rebrand initiative, I think, went great. I think we picked the right agency for that. And that, like I said, is really our ground zero. And that branding is really supposed to start addressing the problems that people see with our, you know, with tourism. Putting that foundation in for how we're going to promote St. Genevieve. Alongside of that, this year, 2026, was supposed to be when we redesigned the website. I got that done last year. It launched alongside of our branding, so we didn't have a lag in that. I thought that was pretty important. And it looks great. We're still working on the, you know, copy and making it, optimizing that. But that, that's coming along. And then alongside that, we were able to create an app for St. Genevieve for the more tech-savvy, cool kids to come in and use that app and find a way to, to plan for St. Jen. And also, that app really works with our website to add plugins and maps and things like that that are really helpful, sort of new age technologies for people to use. Got a list of some national publications that advertised in. And then measurable, measurable impact. I just want to highlight a couple of things. Through that, that marketing spend that we did with McDaniels, we've seen a hundred and twenty percent increase in web traffic. So, you know, if we had fifty people, we had a hundred and twenty people this year go to our um, website. And we have a ninety-eight percent engagement rate, which means if someone gets on our website, they are going, they're clicking through different pages. Uh, our webmaster said that, you know, the normal engagement rate is like sixty to seventy percent. So we're well above that average. Um, and another thing I want to, this is kind of the big one, are we moving the needle? Uh, so down at the bottom of that is visitor traffic. We've had uh, thirteen thousand additional visits over last year. Um, and I, 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 that's kind of been holding steady. And I've been saying that we're about ten thousand less visitors, but I was looking at why that is. Um, we had five thousand less visitors this year at Jure de Fed than we did last year. And we had the eclipse, which brought in an additional three thousand people on a Monday that wouldn't have visited. So that accounts for eight thousand visits. So we're really down two thousand visitors. So we're up four, four point five percent in terms of visits and down one point eight percent in terms of visitors. So I think we're really getting, seeing some bang for our buck there. Um, then I also have a, a segment on new grants and funding that I've secured uh, just this past year. Some of it's for twenty twenty-five, some of it's for twenty twenty-six. But we have a hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-three new dollars um, being spent on tourism that we did not have uh, last year. This is not counting the forty thousand that we get for our program grants year over year. This is a hundred and sixty-four thousand new dollars there. Uh, recognitions and awards, uh, got the Rising Star, as you said. Um, you know, I have a, a talk about the events that I really want to focus on. Uh, Laguine, Kings Ball, the French Heritage Festival, these ones that are really rooted in our French heritage, the ones that we really need to make. Uh, you know, one, they get, they get all the publicity and they are uh, what we need to hang our hat on. And so improving those is, is paramount. Uh, and then I just have a section about what I'm doing for twenty twenty-six, all the, all the preparation I've done so that we can hit the ground running, um, and the things that we need to do, so. Any questions, concerns?
Yeah, Aaron. You know, we know one of the problems, that is, we can't advertise. We never know when the shops are open downtown. Never know when the restaurants are open. They change our hours constantly. I have trouble living here, trying to figure out when they're open. So how do you advertise something like that to the people out there and say, hey, come Monday to Sunday and enjoy Saint Genevieve or how do you overcome something like that? And I understand when the people don't, oh, there's no tourists.
Yeah, well, that, we've got a chicken egg problem, and I, I've talked about that from the beginning. So you kind of have to be strategic about that. And there's a couple of different things, uh, problems that I, 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 like I, like you say, not enough tourists, so shops don't stay open. And then the other thing that I uh, you know, kind of established was people love the town as it is, and they don't want tourists to take over, right? So with these, I, I kind of have a solution that, that works both of these problems. For, you know, the people who don't want tourism to take over, I go, okay, well, we need to do more with less. We need to go with quality over quantity. So we need to uh, get a more affluent demographic coming to town, people with disposable income. And actually, that's kind of perfect for, you know, we don't want to promote that the shops are open. We don't want to promote something that we can't deliver on. But what Saint Genevieve does have is, let's say you're, you know, a businessman in Saint Louis, and you're like, God, I just need to get out of town. I need to go get my head straight. Well, what better place to come than, you know, go stay at the Main Street Inn where it's nice and quiet, relax. Uh, go walk the street at night where there's, you know, you're not gonna like rub, be rubbing shoulders with people, or even on a weekend, you're not gonna be bumping into people like you would in Saint Charles. So come here, decompress, you know, uh, just walk the streets, uh, you know, and, and uh, you know, know that this is a thriving community where people, you know, they, they're on their own time and, you know, they have things to do, and so if they need to close up their shop, uh, they're going to. But, you know, that's what you expect. Come here and just immerse in the community and relax. And so that's.
I agree. Very useful, I like. Nothing going. Go get your work to students.
He does, he does enjoy it. Yeah, absolutely. We like, we'd like them to be spending those dollars, but I, I think they'll find a way to.
I think they'll find a way to spend dollars.
They're very hard to spend their money.
Yeah, right.
I'm just saying that, to me, that's your main issue. You're gonna figure out how we're gonna get tourists in here. I've talked to people that have been here. One of their things is, have you been to Saint Genevieve? Oh, yeah, nice town and everything, but there's nothing to do. Are you gonna come back? Why? Why would I come back? I've seen all the history. I'm sorry, but that's what I'm hearing after, of things. We have no attraction to bring tourists in.
We've had thirteen thousand more visitors this year than uh, than we did last year. You know, we, we are bringing people in, um, and, and, yeah, I think, you know, we do need some things that are gonna bring people here year over year. And, you know, uh, we do, we, we do see how the um, festivals swing year over year, you know? Uh, things have been down as far as well visitation, but it is kind of like one of those things. They come and they see it once and they go, well, do I need to go back?
Teddy, I, I'd have to respectfully disagree. I mean, uh, the coordination that's happened now in the last two years, the promotion, content creation, special projects, working with the festival, working with the ferry project, doing the Main Street Connection that just started on Monday night is, is amazing. Uh, some of the music events that we're having now, um, I, I'd say just the opposite for a town of forty-five hundred people, uh, a new YMCA starting up. I mean, we've got some stuff that's going on here that's as, is it Vale, Colorado? No. Is it Saint Charles? I don't want to be like those places. So we're not gonna get everybody coming back that says, hey, it was a great town. I got to shop all weekend long. I have, I don't know. I mean, do we want, is that all we want is a shopping experience for some of them? I get it. Some of the businesses are closed, and that's their prerogative, and maybe they won't be in business, but we're trying to drive as much traffic as we can, and we're trying to be smart about it. And Aaron, I think what you've done in the last two years is astounding because, I mean, there is a lot of moving parts to this. I mean.
It's creating an ecosystem. It really is, you know? And, and bringing in Missouri Main Street, it will help us, hopefully help us, uh, you know, uh, this is another organization that has a national umbrella. They, they know how to get economic vitality going in a community. And, you know, uh, our, our business owners just need a little bit more training. They need a little bit more wind under their sails, and this is one of those organizations that can do it if we get the right people in.
I mean, if you look at all the PR, marketing companies that you've been dealing with and interviewing, the city, the county, the, the uh, the Port Authority, the state groups with the state tourism and economic development, all the local agencies and groups that you're involved with and working on, the Chicago group, the French Heritage Group in Chicago. I mean, kudos for you for pulling all this stuff together and dragging us along with you because I, I'm impressed.
Yeah, you've done excellent work.
Thank you, sir.
And I, and I tell you what, Aaron, in the almost twenty-five years that I've lived here, I've never had this much interaction between um, the people and like you guys. You know, I've never seen it. This is the first.
I mean, we have to be out there.
Yeah.
Right, you know, it's, so that's great to hear, and I.
Work together.
I'm trying.
Well, and I'll, to your honor, one more time with Dave as well. Your guys is pushed to do some economic development along with that and trying to get people to move here permanently and doing some of those things. And Happy before, when he was with uh, Parkland Ready and stuff, so. So those are some of the things that are driving uh, some change and some development here, so, kudos.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
I think it's an understatement to say that uh, there's not a lot of moving parts to this thing. There is a lot of moving parts, so appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Aaron.
Next up tonight, uh, we have Chief Alk.
I don't look like any of that. Uh, you guys all have a happy March board. I don't really have a lot. Uh, the main thing I want to focus on is the grants that we've been applying and receiving. We got a lot, a lot of stuff for the dog, a lot of stuff for the PD. Uh, Blue Shield was just awarded. You guys will have the resolution to, actually coming up uh, for fully funded side-by-side and brand-new MDTs, six of them.
You want to explain what that is to the public?
So, so Blue Shield is basically, go over Keyhoe, put it in place for cities that are focusing on the community. Uh, make sure the law enforcement is well-equipped with everything. And you have to be a Blue Shield city to get these grants. We are. Did all the stuff at the beginning of the year. We got selected as a Blue Shield designated city. So with that, that puts us in a different pot of money just for us. Nobody else gets to apply for it unless they're a Blue Shield city or county.
Tonight, we have two items that you're getting in, in consent agenda. You want to just talk about those two things?
So, so the first one is a Polaris Ranger. Basically, what we're gonna be using that thing for is Jure de Fed County Fair parades. Uh, when we get to flooding, like we have, we can get in and out of places with that thing. Uh, we're gonna have it marked, we're gonna have lights on it, so.
Can you do day-to-day patrols with that?
Well, you can patrol downtown with it.
I mean, I, I think that'd be great. Do they have windows on it, or is it open?
It's, it's got a windshield.
It's got a windshield, okay. We had a, a previous city that was big on that about, you know, when you have the windows down, you become part of the community. You know, you're not driving by with, you know, tinted windows.
I drive my window down all the time.
That makes for a good appearance for your apartment.
That, that's, that's what the whole side, it's got the multi-function for everything. Uh, I mean, officers are chomping at the bit right now to be able to control downtown weather, you know? Uh, so that, that is part of the resolution. So we can get that. If we get it, it'll be tomorrow when we get that thing done. It's, it's been held. Uh, the MDTs, that's our computers in the cars. Uh, they're very expensive. Uh, that takes the burden off the city. Uh, I'm actually working on another grant to get five more. And that will replace every single computer we have in our cars with brand-new ones. Uh, again, it's all reimbursed back to the city. The turnaround rate's pretty quick right now. They want to hurry and get it all submitted and reclosed so they can reopen it again here. And then one other thing is looking for the blessing of the, of the board here. Uh, looking at another K nine. Got a call for a grant, fully funded K nine. They purchase our dog, they outfit our car, they pay for the training, and they put a kennel up at a house. So I'm looking for the blessing of that. Uh, we are, it, it will increase dog food, but we are actually in the middle of working on a grant for dog food right now to be fully funded, so.
Well, do I need it, or is it just a free gift?
Uh, no, I, so we do need it. Um, I like one on each squad. Right now, we have one. And I've been messing with the schedule to try to benefit both squads for this, for this utilization, utilization of this dog. Uh, it's just sometimes it works out, sometimes it doesn't. Having this extra dog will give me, will give the police department a dog on seven days a week. Uh, the plan is to have the schedule fixed where that dog is pretty much all day long.
The primary use is drug detection?
What's that?
Is it the primary use, drug detection?
Yeah.
Anything else outside of?
Drugs and apprehension, uh, locate items, you know, throw a pin out in the woods, dog's gonna find it, tracking. Well, it's a dual-purpose dog. Uh, so it'll help lighten, lighten it up a little bit on our current K nine right now. Uh, we take the dogs to the schools for PR bids. We walk the schools. Uh, and it, it just gives the officers an extra dog. It, it's very beneficial, so. Kind of just.
You talked about two squads. I mean, that's not day and night. It's just during, seven days a week during the day.
We have two squads. Uh, we got an A squad and a B squad. That's how one squad will work two days, whatever, the other squad on their days off. So one squad works, the other squad's off, the other squad comes in, that squad's off, so. And right now, the way I have with the dog right now, he's floating between two squads. So his days off are a little different. So he doesn't actually get his three-day weekend on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. He gets a Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Dogs have requirements for days off.
They like their weekends. But.
Do you have a handler interested, or do you have?
So we, I've got four officers that are chomping at the bit for that. Um, I would actually, I started doing the whole process back when I even had a detective spot. I do an interview panel. Uh, they've been on with me when I do detective, I get help detectives from another agency, that we do a full-blown interview on these guys. We're gonna do the same thing with K nine. Uh, we're gonna ensure we get the right officer there, so once the dog's out, we don't want him just sitting around. So we'll have the same thing, do another interview panel. And we'll have K nine handlers, uh, one of the handlers that trained, both trained our dogs, he's gonna be there. So we got a whole, whole different process for all that.
So what's the lifespan of one of those dogs, or what can they be active in their role?
They, they vary. Um, some, you get ten years, five years. It just kind of depends on the dog.
And another question, out of these four hundred and sixty-seven calls uh, in October and stuff, uh, what percentage of those are during the day and after of an evening or the night shift, whatever?
I do not have that broke down. It, that's varies so much. Uh, some days, we won't have anything during the day, and at night, it's getting hammered. And then some days, it's busy. Plus, the other, yesterday, we were busy during the day. I was out helping with calls. So this is everywhere.
So we still have two officers on at all times, right?
Is uh, if, if the board's generally in favor of pursuing the, the grant for the second K nine, would you be coming back with like the grant proposal to be approved by the board, or what are you looking for?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so right now, you're just trying to figure out if the board's adamant against it.
Yes.
Otherwise, you'll come back.
Yeah, I'll, I'll show everybody everything for, show you guys that it is, everything is covered with it. It's through an organization, so.
So Chief's kind of looking for your feedback, and then we can bring the grant proposal back in December.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I'm for it. I mean, drugs are a good thing, so.
Sounds good. Ray is good.
That's all I've got.
Chief, on a different note here, this, the window tent meters.
Mm-hmm.
That we don't have any of those now, or?
Nope. Well, we do now. We got six of them.
How, how do you enforce that?
Uh, we have an ordinance for window tent. Windows only supposed to be thirty-five percent up in the front.
Is that for, for uh, police vehicles and everybody?
Police vehicles are exempt.
Pardon?
Police vehicles are exempt.
I had one other thing that was on the consent agenda. Uh, and that was uh, uh, getting rid of surplus property. How do we get rid of eleven shotguns? I mean, we just can't.
Uh, dealer, uh, firearms dealer would take it over there.
Right. All right, thanks.
Any additional questions for Chief?
All right, thanks, sir.
Last up tonight, go worry with the lions.
Good evening. You guys got my board? All our things, like mining signs are up. We got one more, uh, something to put on, be done tomorrow. We're one short. Aaron's gonna get that, leaving a couple more, so we'll get that up. Um, well, grade seven are clean now. Well, grade is four hundred percent improvement on the uh, output on that. Well, seven is fourteen percent, not a huge increase, but uh, I mean, it's uh, concrete for the Peaky Park, which is uh, poured today to be, that was set next week. Uh, BT electric was here today for the generator, water plant, to get that working up. Be back tomorrow, hopefully finish it up. They, they've touched on Fourth Street, Choverstone, there's three plates up there now. So we kind of took some cold mix around it to try to make it smoother, that can be, and it's not great, but uh, uh, it is, and then um, the lot city will be receiving a sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars back from the Lions from the repair, but it's passed seven, a year.
Buy those new heavy-duty bearings for the street twister, then?
Do I? I'm sorry.
Is that to buy those heavy-duty bearings?
It won't be that much, but yeah.
Right.
Street feet are back together, it's out, it's. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Written tonight?
Yeah, yeah, working four plus hours, we, we, actually, I'm working on Friday. Doesn't, goes down the street, doesn't look like very, or very long, but, yes, you get chills.
I hadn't paid any attention to that water loss percentage before. Is that normal? The six point three eight?
Yeah, um, uh, our yearly is brought, taken, this year was at seven point eight. Now, we'll never, it's right around, right around eight, since, kind of where we think that is.
So I guess that includes like water main breaks and?
Yes, that's, yeah, yeah. Uh, flushing, uh, jetting anytime we use water, so.
Point-based RAB report? The report?
Yeah.
Uh, Corey sent me a report about an hour ago, so I have not had time to read it.
It, it, it is a complete joke, whatever, so maybe I'll interview him.
Well, I mean, you can certainly talk about, if you want, some of the uh, solutions to the point-based INI.
Yes, so our, our analysis of the situation, which included the, the CCTV footage and the smoke testing and, and just our working knowledge of, of issues out there. Um, it really appears that the, the pipe is structurally found. We didn't see any smoking gun, so to say, with, with, with any major defects. We did see a couple, there are a couple locations where the joints were separated, but again, nothing. We did see a couple, there are a couple locations where the joints were separated, but again, nothing, nothing really notable in the way of defects. Um, and, and there were some laterals that were installed incorrectly, which would attribute to the backup issues that some customers are experiencing. But all that to say, it, it really seems like there is a capacity issue here and not an issue with the pipe itself. Which is going to be a, a long term, um, uh, solution that needs to be addressed by Cochran. They're working on that. That Cochran has to do a survey for you. So this will actually be something they need to look at for a long term solution to resolve. In the short term, we do have some ideas that we'd like to, um, run out, um, see what they can do for us. One of them is going to be purchase some flow monitors and install them in the manholes in these locations. And that would give us an alert, a, a signal notifying us that, that that manhole is surcharging and perhaps we can get on site and shut the line or pump that to prevent an SSO or, or backups from happening. So that's one thing is, is to purchase flow monitors and um, hopefully get out there before the situation, uh, becomes dire. Um, another thing that we'd like to do is work with the city to maybe beef up the ordinances as they relate to the disposal of debris, grease, rags, deter and prevent, um, as much of that as we can from monitoring the systems. Um, what was the, what was the third thing? I had three things. Yes, checkouts. So for the customers that are experiencing issues with the backups, the city is currently providing checkouts to install their laterals. And we'd like to continue, um, encouraging customers to have those installed.
Is that all we can do is ask them to install them or? I mean, is there any leverage that?
No, the latter was a privately, so the city is that, the city would, would install and they would take a responsibility for that.
One other comment that I made when they were out there doing this crawler camera, and I didn't, uh, take time to ask him, but he talked about that system being hydro locked out there in this one particular area. Uh, what does that mean?
I'm pretty sure he was talking about the, the dip in the pipe or the, they were putting the head of the camera. So that minimal flow, it's still, still has that sag in it. So it's, it's, uh, full capacity all the time in the pipe there.
Cause he, he made the comment that we couldn't add any more capacity.
Right.
You know, that it was hydro locked and stuff. So is that a matter of, uh, you say there was nothing major out there, but that sounds like a major issue having that dip in that pipe. So.
Well, there, there were no major cracks is, is what I meant by, by no major issues. It is a major issue that it is that capacity. That is absolutely a major issue, which is something that Cochran will need to, to look at and, and provide, uh, recommendations for, um, what that solution is.
Yeah, right there, parkway, that may know that when we were, that 19, so we were completely underwater the whole night. So I was on a dry day with over 100 feet, not three weeks or so.
Well, I'd like to congratulate you on the 18 trees being installed, uh, in the last, uh, month, in the start of our reforestation project. Yeah, they look great.
Any other questions, Corey and Erica?
Oh, I had, she did have one more. Uh, at the end of Herzog Lane on the new Ninth Street project, there's a, a manhole cover there that is a pretty big dip in the road. Uh, and I know they kind of bevel the blacktop around, but, but that's pretty annoying. There's, or anything?
We'll take a look and we'll see. We'll rise if not, get an order to, they mentioned that to me Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, alright, thanks.
I have one. On, uh, Washington Street between Fourth and Fifth, uh, the paving was good. There was an area there where a storm drain goes down through the hole there, where the asphalt, it's not marked. You know, on, on the right hand side, you go up the hill. Personally, to drive in that, you, you, you could have an axe in. I would recommend either at, at a minimum of, of painting a yellow stripe around that so you can see it, or possibly one of those, um, bendable delineators there, I would guess you could call it, to keep somebody from driving in that. Now, cause if you're not paying attention or moving over or something like that, you could go in there and, and possibly damage a car.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get one there.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Bye, bro.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open up the floor to public comment. Would anybody like to address the board?
My name's Gina Bennett. I'm a retired person who is a disability advocate. I tend to go to city or county meetings as I can, trying to encourage looking at things from a different perspective. Um, I want to give a big attaboy to the city and county. In the last four to five months, I see 180 improvement. Some areas, way more than 180. It's like 360. I don't do math well, but really good job. The police department especially, I got a ticket the other night. I was so impressed because the officer, parents was so respectful. My headlight kept blinking off and on. I didn't know why, uh, Joe Prince told me why. And we fixed it and I couldn't find my proof of insurance because the geomagnetic storm really messed with State Farm's app and my brain. But I did have insurance and I was given a ticket that says, this is how you don't have to pay something. So that was really good and I was impressed. Um, I think the town needs more volunteers and interns. I spoke with the school board president and tend to go to the school board meeting about that. The town, Aaron's doing an awesome job. I think he could use help with the volunteer network like we used to have back in the old days. You know, old ladies like me are interested in certain things and there's a lot of young people who would love to resume padding things. Um, the YMCA, amazing. I'm so impressed with everything they're doing. Um, I didn't get to go to the county meeting today because I was gonna tell them all the same attaboy, doing good. Um, I'm kind of throwing around the idea on St. Genevieve, here's the local scoop, and with another local group of doing a countywide business Christmas display thing where you award different categories. It's, it's a very loose idea. Tree, window, yard, something, and then giving prizes. I talked to Dina at the Chamber of Commerce and also downtown St. Jen. So that's something I'm just throwing around, you know, maybe to do something in the, not the same week as the Christmas festival, but like maybe before it or something or after. I don't really know. So that's just some of the stuff I've been thinking about. Also, I had a GFWC meeting in, uh, November. We had the Crisis Aid International people talking about, uh, the House of Hope and technology and internet safety for parents. I got an extra brochure. I gave some to the police a long time ago, but if anybody's interested, I have this. Um, and I think that's pretty much it. The rest of this stuff would be addressed to like the school board or the Y or different things, because I see the need for emotional slash trauma people, support groups that are weekends and nights. Community counseling can't offer that. We have Parkinson's pals, but there's really not a whole lot of stuff for parents and adults with neurodivergent stuff. And if you don't know what neurodivergent is, Google it. There's a whole lot of stuff out there. So that's pretty much it. Thank you all. Doing good.
Thank you, Gina.
Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Darwin Lizzie. I'm a resident of, uh, retired resident of St. Genevieve. And something that I got to, uh, depart was the, uh, the, uh, museum had a presentation with Bill Niger. We spoke about the 200th anniversary of St. Genevieve. And, uh, currently the, um, you know, museum is putting together a display on that 200th celebration, but that 200th celebration is soon to become a 300th celebration in the year 2035, which is just short of 10 years from now and time goes really fast. And I was watching, um, DVD about Mark Twain. He's turning 200 years old in 2035. So there's a lot of history. Um, there's a lot of potential here for really doing something big in St. Genevieve. And I'd like to get the ball rolling in there because I don't hear anything going on. I just never on anybody's agenda. I, I, I went to the, uh, Main Street Connections Group and I asked the presenters, do you know that we're turning 300 years in 10 years' time? They were not aware of it. These, these things need to be, start to be built in and, and what it does is it sets us a goal at nine years from now. What, what things can we achieve in nine years? And, and so, you know, I think there's needs to be sort of a planning process needs to be started to get things organized and, um, and pulled off. And it, and it's not just this board, it's, it's everybody. It's the churches, the fairground, the national park, the state park. I mean, the, all these, uh, groups need to be, and, and somehow we need to wake them up and start to think about this. Uh, because, you know, it's just the city of St. Genevieve can't do it justice. It's got to be the county, it's got to be the state. And I, I think, you know, there should be a St. Genevieve Day proclamation with the US government. I mean, so there's, I mean, there's a full scale of, uh, research or, uh, support that we could draw on, but but I think, I think we need to start, you know, what are the possibilities? What can we do that? That's a little bit different than what we normally deal with on a day to day basis. You know, like passenger train, we could have it, there, there's, BSNF has got a passenger train. They could come and visit us for a week or a day or whatever. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of different things that, uh, we could generate ideas on and maybe pull some of these big things off. There, there was, um, I saw in the paper, the, uh, riverboat landing in New Bourbon, uh, is something that's being developed. Well, you know, an ideal deadline would be 2035. Let's get that done before 2035. I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that we could set these goals up for, the one year, the five year and the 10 year now becoming a nine year plan. Uh, these, these things need to be kickstarted. And I think it starts, it should start being on the agendas of, of our different groups, of, of the churches, of, you know, all, all this, all the people who have any interest in the, in St. Genevieve. Uh, it should be part of that planning process and it's, it's out there, but that time is going to come by real fast. And a lot of things take time to develop. So, you know, we need to start putting it on our agendas and start making it more focused than just something that's going to happen. Thank you.
Well stated. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody hasn't seen Bill Nager's presentation on 200 years celebration, it's on YouTube. I think every alderman should look at it. Cause it's really impressive what this little town did 100 years ago. Uh, in terms of resources and monies, the state gave them $1,000 or something, uh, to get this going. And the state of Missouri, I can't imagine what they would do now, but, uh, we have to start looking for those kind of resources to really elevate this and make it, we're the only town in Missouri that can say that. We'll be 300 before anybody.
Yeah.
So what kind of follow up would we do on that? Do you think we should get a committee, a commission? You can't have anybody over 70 because they may not be here.
I thought you just said you were a cool kid.
I eliminated myself.
Well, I think, I think Aaron could probably help us.
I'm, I'm already.
He does everything to do.
He's already brainstorming.
The wheels are turning.
The wheels are turning.
I've got, I've got some stuff and that works.
I think we need mayoral muscle behind it. The agenda should work. Just, we'll turn around, it'll be five years.
I'll go to the governor's office. I'll knock on his door and see what's going on. Alright, any other public comment at this time? Alright. If not, we will move along to tonight's consent agenda.
David, I have a question, kind of in general. Uh, I can, you know, when I see money issues on here, things costing money, even though they're grants, does that, uh, keep us from having to pass them as a normal expenditure? It doesn't?
No, I mean, they can be resolutions. The consent agenda is basically non controversial. Two of these grants are 100% funded. Uh, Chief Hallack talked about them.
Right.
Um, and the other one is a grant that we've talked about for probably a year and a half now. Um, it's a 40 60. You know, like, a year and a half ago, I came to you about applying for the grant. Then we talked about, uh, what kind of grant. Uh, we're finally to the point where we have someone to contract. It's been approved. It's in the line item. We can certainly pull it out, but.
I'm just kind of curious why, you know, uh, if certain things, you know, because they were grants or something, that they didn't have to go to a normal resolution and stuff, but.
Well, this is a normal resolution. It's just, it's not an ordinance, but they're 100% funded. So that's why I placed them here. And the other one, we've talked about it for a year and a half.
Right. Not fine.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second. This, I'm sorry, second in the consent agenda, yes?
Yep. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, at this time, the mayor and the board of aldermen will hold a public hearing to consider a request from Jason and Ashley Stackley for a special use permit to operate a guest lodging room at 135 North Third Street in an R2 general residential district. We will open up this public hearing at 7:06. So we received an application from the applicants, uh, October 10th. Also, the filing fee at that time, notice of the meeting was mailed to the applicant and adjoining property owners. Uh, also sent to the police and fire department on October 20th. Uh, received the application back from the fire district on October 21st. No issues. Back from the police department on November 3rd. No issues. Meeting notice was sent to the media on November 2nd. Uh, Planning and Zoning, uh, held their meeting on November 6th and voted to recommend approval to the board 503. Uh, and that leads us to tonight, a public hearing, uh, November 13th. I have received no remarks from any adjoining property owners concerning this special use permit.
I had just one question in the terminology here. It's called a guest lodging room. Is that?
It's a guest lodging establishment. It's entire building.
Entire building, okay.
I mean, it's a shotgun house, so it may only have one, but yeah, it's basically one room.
It's one room.
Yeah, it's one room.
It's a cool house.
Is this the one that Martin lived in?
It is the one that Martin.
Isn't the last shotgun house in town, correct?
Correct.
Somebody, I didn't hear what they said and stuff, but didn't somebody say that was a Sears and Roebuck house?
No, it's a shotgun house.
Oh, just a shotgun, okay.
Um, any other questions at this time regarding special use permits for the public hearing? Okay, if not, we will close the public hearing at 7:08. And that will take you to some old business. We have a second reading of bill number 4694. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a proposal for professional services with Cochran Engineering for a citywide paving program. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Hyman?
Yes.
Alderman Huey?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Fahey?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dobbs?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4694 now becomes ordinance 4618.
Thank you very much. And then next up in old business tonight, we have a second reading of bill number 4696. This is an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the city of St. Genevieve for the fiscal year 2026 budget relating to the various revenue and expenditure increases. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Hyman?
Yes.
Alderman Huey?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Fahey?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dobbs?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4696 now becomes ordinance 4619.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Now we can move along to some new business tonight. First up, we have Resolution 2026-06. This is a resolution appointing Stephanie Gek to the St. Genevieve Housing Authority Board. Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Next up tonight, we have scheduled for a first and second reading. I think that's the direction, Aaron, you requested that, correct? Okay, okay. So first up, this is a first reading of Bill number 4699. This is an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute an agreement with Jasper Paul Marketing LLC for limited public relations and marketing services for the city of St. Genevieve.
I do want to point out that you have a revised contract at your seat.
So what was the revision?
Your city attorney advised to remove two, I'm sorry, Mark, go ahead.
That's okay. I reviewed, I had some to remove, waiver of all warranties. They had a waiver of all warranties. And I changed some language to confirm that if there's any dispute, it'll be in St. Genevieve County Circuit Court. I think that.
Took out the indemnification, yeah.
Yeah, indemnification, so we're not indemnifying them for the lawsuits. And a couple clerical changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
You're seeking a second reading on this?
He has requested a second reading.
And the reason for that, Aaron?
Just so we can get started. We're not going to get started until January, but we need to plan this out. So I want to be ready to go by January first with this. Time is kind of up, but yes, since as far as getting, you know, these campaigns out before springtime.
Does that? I mean.
We do, and we have one meeting left.
Well, I get that, but I don't think there's going to be any opposition in December. But does this meet the criteria we've usually used to have a second reading?
I don't know what the criteria is. I mean, it's really when you all decide.
I think historically, we've had two readings in the November and December meeting. Aaron, like you mentioned, would like to get started with these folks, planning.
I don't have a problem with it, but I could have brought up, I figured I'd bring it up since I could probably do it quicker than somebody else that's longer-winded when he brings it up. So if it, if it doesn't, if there's no conflict of having a second reading, I make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for a second reading of Bill number 4699. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This will be a second reading of Bill number 4699. This is an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute an agreement with Jasper Paul Marketing LLC for limited public relations and marketing services for the city of St. Genevieve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call?
Alderman Huey.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Fahey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dobbs.
Yes.
Alderman Iman. Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4699 now becomes ordinance 4620.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up tonight, also scheduled for a first and second reading or recommended, requested. This is a first reading of Bill number 4700. This is an ordinance approving a special use permit for Jason and Ashley Stackley that will allow the operation of a guest lodging business at 135 North Third Street. Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We got to make a motion for a second reading of Bill number 4700.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for a second reading. All in favor? Yes.
Just please state your reason for a second reading.
I can only imagine, you know, with what they've done with those two properties down there, I think it's been a big asset and more pride to them for what they've done and let them get started.
Fair enough.
Rent before the holiday.
All right, I believe I have a motion and a second for a second reading. It's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this will be a second reading of Bill number 4700. This is an ordinance approving a special use permit for Jason and Ashley Stackley that will allow the operation of a guest lodging business at 135 North Third Street. Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Fahey.
Yep.
Alderwoman Dobbs.
No.
Alderman Huey.
Yes.
Alderman Iman.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Seven yes, one no. Bill number 4700 now becomes ordinance 4621.
Thank you very much. And last up tonight, we have a first and potential second reading of Bill number 4701. This is an ordinance to amend section 115 dot 190, appointment qualifications of the ordinances of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
Discussion, Aaron.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, let's go first.
I was a little bit about, I'm not really sure what this is about.
I drafted it. It just, it just removes the requirement that the city administrator be a resident within the city limits.
That's the only thing.
That's the only change.
That can be reversed, but sometime vacancy in the job or.
Oh, for sure.
I don't know if I'm completely comfortable with removing all residency requirements. So I'm not sure I'm going to vote for this, just the way it reads, unless we can be amended. We have an applicant that, I understand the reasons. And I think removing the complete residency requirements, maybe something of the county or within a certain minute range. We just had this issue with the chief and we've had this other issue before. I think removing completely the residency is the wrong thing to go. I think anyone that says not being a resident of this town, or at least this county, is, I misguided, I guess, so I'm not sure.
Can we put a stipulation in there to, that they have to at least be a resident of the county?
Yeah, you can.
I mean, I would feel more comfortable at least having that part of the restriction stay. I don't like getting rid of the, the whole thing, no. I agree. I think there should be a limit as far as, they should at least live in the county.
Right.
But how far in the county are we saying as far as response? Because, you know, we had somebody that wanted to live in St. Louis and then commute here. I think that's too far to be involved in the city. And we need some limitation.
But what do you, what would be the farthest? If you were out in Womack or, what would be, I mean, you might get 40 something minutes, I would think probably to get to the heart of the city. I think some of those addresses might be 40 plus minutes.
Forty minutes.
Yeah. So I think maybe even the county might be stretching it a little bit too. I don't know. I mean, I'm a moment for discussion, but.
I would say within, can we limit it to like within 20 miles of City Hall? I mean, we can't go east, obviously, but.
Yeah, the problem we've got, Joe, is we're all the way on one side of the county and the city and stuff, so.
I mean, if we had a bridge, that'd be one thing, but we don't, so.
Yeah, but I, the mileage thing, I think, would get too complicated. I think the county, I agree, the county is.
For this purpose, I think we should at least keep the county clause in there.
Yes.
Yes.
And then if, in the future, we need to revisit it because they're an hour away, but they're still in the county, then, you know, we can revisit it at that time. But for this particular purpose, I'd like to at least keep the, keep it county-wise or anyway. Yeah, but you go too far. I mean, we've got a lot of rock roads out there. And it's not fast traveling.
And the other thing.
All right, all right, hold on.
He's working on those granite roads.
Yeah.
I'm just saying right now, I don't care what you're doing.
But I also would like to encourage him to be.
It's too hard, it's too, takes too much time to get there if you're traveling from a country place way over by.
You know.
Army done or something like that. Trying to make your way over there.
Let's just do it in a lens.
Can, can I make, I'm sorry, I make a suggestion. But it's your prerogative to want to do. But the next, I think the next item on the agenda is, is the mayor's appointment of a city administrator. And so that is why this item is immediately before that item is because it's contemplated that somebody lives in the county but not the city would be appointed. And so it's appropriate to change the qualifications so that you're not appointing someone that's not qualified according to the ordinances. So if, if everybody would be in agreement that the ordinance should be limited to, you know, county resident, then perhaps you would consider passing this tonight. And the next month, we can, we can amend it for all future employees for that position to the county or within 30 miles of the, of the city within St. Genevieve County. There are some places in, like you mentioned, St. Genevieve County, they're probably a longer drive than my house in Festus, you know, by time. But, but if that's the concern, that can be dealt with at the next meeting. We move forward with the rest of the agenda. However, it's your prerogative, it's your ordinance. So I thought, but because it doesn't seem to be in agreement, perhaps you put up a work session. If it's going to be, you know, or you could just have a discussion item because it's hard for me. I, right now, of course, you're not done talking, I interrupted you. But if it came to consensus, I would have to draft the ordinance to change whatever you kind of generally agreed to, and then we put on an agenda.
So we can't just say we approve this with the amendment that?
We can, we'd have to read the whole thing or we'd have to make a quick printout available to the public. So in order to read it by the title, like we always do, we have to have a copy available to the public. So the alternative to that is to read the whole thing straight through with the added language and then we type up a more professional version for it to be codified. So if you want me to, we can handwrite into the changes, but then we have to read it word for word. I'm sorry. Or, or we can make a really quick change, print about, make it available to the public, and then we read it by title. So there's a way to do it, there is a way to do it tonight, to be honest.
I have a little time here, you can play. I think what you're saying is do one reading on it a night and then do another reading on it.
No, I'm, I'm, no, I'm suggesting you pass it both readings tonight if you're inclined to and resolve that issue. And then you discuss the more restrictive residency requirement later. If that's, if that's the only holdup, but.
Well, I'm going to ask a lot more.
So just keep in mind that we allow our police department to travel 35 miles home and back and take cars home. So I don't think this is too unreasonable to put into effect that the CA can actually live in the county.
I agree. But what we're doing here is there is no restriction at all.
Yeah, and we need to put the county in there. I agree. I'm with that.
So I'm not inclined to pass this tonight the way it reads now. So I will not vote for this tonight.
Okay, so.
As it reads out.
Fair enough. Is, is there a consensus among the board?
Yes.
For county?
Yes.
I am.
I'm for it, yeah.
Yes.
What about you, Patrick?
Alderman Fahey.
Yeah, he's good.
Okay.
So how long would it take to reprint it?
Well, I could read the whole thing.
Fine, I. I think we should go ahead and roll on it and make the change.
Same, could probably add it in just to give it.
So is it just within St. Genevieve County?
I think with technology.
This to read.
Right.
Must be a resident of St. Genevieve County, because even if they're in the city.
All the ways to communicate now.
Resident of St. Genevieve County.
So we could add a sentence, "The city administrator shall reside in St. Genevieve County." Is that acceptable?
Yep.
It's going. So do you want, do you want to? Did I send it to you?
What's easiest for you? Um, I, yeah, I can go to it rough ass.
Did I send it to you, Warren? I think I did.
Yes.
If you said that sentence and printed it out, we'll just have to make copies available to the public.
Can we talk about another subject in the meantime?
It depends. How long will it take?
It's up to the.
Not long.
Is it another agenda item that you're wanting to talk about or is it just?
No, about possibly changing the date of the one meeting in November. It always comes up the Thursday before deer season. A couple of deer hunters here, you know, so it would be nice.
Chief seems to be excited.
Great, but, you know, it would be nice. I have plans, but.
I just wrote that on the calendar.
Pardon me?
So your proposal would be to do it like the third Thursday, potentially? Because that's going to be in the middle of this.
That would be the, yeah, like the Wednesday before.
I mean, we can, you, you can adjust, we can adjust the meeting as long as we provide the proper notice.
The 18, is that the only December 18?
A body one, an earlier reading?
No, no.
Yeah, they're fine.
The one that we're.
The one, the one that we're presently in now.
So you're talking about next year?
Yeah.
Next, this would be next year.
Right.
November.
Not that dedicated of a hunter, but I do like to get away, so. And I don't judge those too.
Yeah, I mean, I do.
You want, we do want.
It's all I got.
Well, I think we'll need to address that probably next September, October. And I'll meet whenever you all want. How about that?
Do you leave, do you leave on Thursday?
What?
Do you leave on a Thursday?
It takes time. I mean.
Got to get it all, got to get everything set.
You know, it, it's going to stop a lot. Again, I guess that's for the county.
Yeah, just get two days of a shower.
Sure.
Smell like Irish Spring out during the year.
Exactly. Got to get the cologne on.
You got, you got to cure it out.
No, not. And then I use dryer sheet.
That done it.
I said, I didn't know.
I mean, they make a spray, you know, you can.
Yeah, but it don't cover a bounce very well.
Probably doesn't cover up a bounce sheet very well.
I washed my husband like hunting deer and that sent free stuff. And then I use a dryer sheet.
I'm not trying to.
Probably doesn't.
Yeah, I don't think you've been hunting since it's been years.
Come in and surrender my porch for me to get one. I'd probably send him next.
Only hunt if it's above 40 degrees.
You only hunt if it's above 40?
Yeah, above 40 degrees and stuff, but. And dry.
I went hunting one time with them and I, it's too loud. I never went again, it never took me.
It is important to be quiet.
I know.
I'd just like to nap.
I'd just like to nap.
So are we gonna get two readings tonight, Joe?
Yeah, that's fine.
Are we gonna get two readings tonight?
All you can want.
Two readings tonight, or?
Nope, I, I, I don't know what the hurry would be at two readings. Especially with, especially with changes like this, I think that would be.
Like for me, I could. Yeah, I could hear the train coming.
This is the horn.
I don't care.
I don't. Let's see, how many did we have?
I didn't want for the column. But it was, it was a weird radio.
Yeah.
Three?
I would too.
Three out of one, two, three, four. Five, six, fifty percent.
Sorry, I have teeth issues.
So with this change, we're gonna go on this floor within the county. We're not pursuing two readings, then I'm.
That's up to the board.
I don't, I don't know why we'd need two readings.
Yeah.
She's hiding the bombs now. Why can't we have one and then one in these nourish?
That's totally a.
Now her dogs are attacking.
I mean, I think clarity in the position is a good thing. Um, with us only having, you know, one meeting this month, it complicates things. I mean, normally we're meeting, you know, every couple weeks and it's not that big of a deal.
And he lived over there all the time.
I mean, we, if you would like to have another meeting in November, we could certainly do that.
I would think you could do it in December. And you know, I thought we were gonna do it.
Sorry. He only said one.
We'll get a new car.
He only said one.
One, one, two, thirteen. Oh, I don't know, I didn't call.
Now I get.
You just said it would happen.
They came out of the factory. Headlight, you got your choice if you want, but you did it. You add all your car. Do they readjust those headlights? I have a long field for planning and stuff. When I meet a police car.
Harmon Stager, you got any shout outs you wanna give? I know you like to give out some shout outs at the end of the video.
Uh, I have one, I didn't know if we're, what kind of, are we adjourned or what are we doing? We're.
We're filibustering.
They just put extra lights on.
Not a popular term right now, filibustering.
We're, we're just killing time.
Right. Well, we're not political, so we probably filibuster.
Are we in a government shutdown?
That's what.
City, city's on the shut, man.
I guess we can have, you know, those two, can't we? A government shutdown, a city government.
Let's not do that.
Nothing.
Guess if we're in a budget mess, I guess we could.
It is a terrible safety issue.
I don't know if that's ever happened at the city, at least here, but I'm sure other places.
Up for a, I'm sure you don't tell me. Put a four foot LED light bar on the front.
Not me.
They're probably running today, they're some bright. Oh, yeah. You can see bright. No, they, they don't have.
Well, I didn't, I didn't.
I heard that.
I do, oh my god.
I can ask her.
I can talk to her too, Patrick.
Yeah. They all kind of sit a little higher.
And Jeffrey, you know, Jules.
It's just my, my, uh, my diesel engine, if you know.
That's why he was asking.
Right in the window.
Yes, you know.
I think he had his headlights on.
A lot of non-committal answers up there.
Probably tried to be, you know, like a blind. There was nothing you could do.
What are we talking about? Signing up.
Adjustment. Those eligible services.
Oh.
They don't do it.
I mean, I don't have to do this with the eighteen.
My fifty-nine, I have that old farm truck I didn't.
Just give me your twenty.
Fifty-nine. No kind of.
I mean, there's a lot of.
Which, you know, I read the proclamation videos for money. Just change it. Yeah. You can get them all right. I still do my own road, seven miles per day.
I love she had.
I feel like it's, yeah. I mean, I don't. I'm just. Rob, it's, it's a trouble.
I was asking.
Of course you got. And to me. As blind as me. It's far more. They, I mean, everybody's far less blind. I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see the, the, the issue.
On my seventeen. They're like, oh, I can't wait for the next.
They're gonna set those mirrors.
I can't wait for the next wear out, just can't wait for it. I was like.
How would I?
Yeah.
Do you need a problem? And you sure you store this?
That is a message.
Yeah, I gotta see, I gotta see.
Cause we had a cold affair, then he runs and stacks free up.
And save the end.
We can. He's got a little screw. It's gonna be here this summer.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's worth it. About, uh, this man's first. So which one is forty?
Forty-two.
Four ninety.
Yeah, which is.
Yeah. One, one digit off, actually I had them both.
I could.
That one, that's.
And we were so, we were so. Yeah. And then they came. Very soon, still. Still, they're still.
I mean, we're both.
Stop, I'm sorry. She's paying.
Oh, yeah, she did.
She, yeah. Same with she though. Yeah. Every.
At least she did have.
You might just. Memory. It's. Well, that's just something, man, which is running. I say above this, you know, we just got to talk.
Standing. I mean, all kinds of. It's a man you crack, you know, that was just saying, but it's, it's hard to man you back. It's a deal bad. Roll on this stuff.
A lot of weather in the pan, they ask, can they put more?
What?
I don't know, they have to when they were attacking. Cause we went back here.
Thank you, Martin.
You know, she was angry.
She was angry at her brother.
Yeah, she, he told me that too. I've got seatbelt fifty-nine, which is for kids. She had low.
Most people are done in the morning. You just gotta keep going.
I hear you.
There's some days.
Should I?
I don't know about that. Uh, I'd be bouncing on the walls, you'd have to pull me down.
I feel it.
It's not down.
Sure.
The tent, it's probably, you don't bother. Oh, I, I see.
There is a little thing with that.
Next, next week, tacos.
There it is, laxen.
There you go.
Small town, either.
You want it, yes, of.
No, I want to turn them off.
Off?
Yeah.
That usually means somebody floor it and go for it.
Let's, let's head in first.
Did you guys get copies of this? I thought, why do we got them?
So thank you to Pam and thank you to Mark for, uh, making that quick change for us within, uh, bill number four seven zero one. So just to recap, um, let me read, read the.
Just the title, just like any other notice, we just had to have, uh, uh, the same version that you guys have available to the public that you've written by title, but since we needed a change, we didn't have copies available to the public either online or.
Okay. All right.
I moved to approve. I thought you already did.
I don't, I did, I did read it once, yes, it has been read.
Moved to.
That's where we stopped.
Moved to approve, bill number four seven oh one, first reading as amended here on this page.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
I don't think we need a second reading on this tonight. So I know you're asking for a second reading, but I don't understand the urgency to have a second reading on this. We have an interim city administrator who gets paid extra right now that we're fully functional, there's no lack of any reason why we would need to have a second reading, um, to do this tonight. We can approve this again, traditionally as we always do, uh, the second reading in our December meeting.
Okay. Can I, can I, can I flip that on you and say, why, why wouldn't we?
Because we have an interim city administrator who's getting paid extra and there's no reason to have two readings tonight. There's no urgency to have this stuff.
There's no urgency to have?
We just made a major change and we're not giving the public very much input. So I have a real problem, second reading tonight on this, and there's no reason to do it.
On the input of the residency requirement?
Yeah, this is a big change to an ordinance. And we're not letting the public come, we gave them five minutes, we just changed it.
Well, they, they had the nuts and bolts of that prior.
And, and they also know that we try to traditionally have two readings on separate meetings.
We have two meetings in a month.
Well, yes. I see your point, but I mean, without the second, without a second meeting, I think that does put a factor in here that needs to be talked about at least, but.
We, we can continue the meeting and we can have the next agenda item on here and, and we can, we can vote on that.
If, if, if there is no second reading tonight, a bill number four, if we don't have resolution, if we don't have some kind of decision, second reading and a decision on bill number four seven zero one, then we will not proceed with the appointment this evening.
So, so why are we expediting this through, through this? Well, no, we just do, I always thought second readings was something goes, we're gonna do it right now because, oh, there's a deadline, there's a deadline or something. I don't see it here. All I see is, um, do it, do it in December, appoint the person. I don't.
What if we don't have a forum? What if we don't have a forum in December?
It could be all dead in December. I don't care, but I'm just saying, there's no rush. And if days, well, anyway, I don't see any rushing. I just think we're exceeding this two readings in one night long.
Move to go in a closed session for personnel.
That's not on the agenda, would be, would not be appropriate to go in a closed session.
I still move to go in a closed session for person, discussion of personnel.
Recommending against it, but you can.
I mean, that's not what we're on right now, and that's not on the agenda.
Has a motion on the floor.
Well, what we're turning around and doing right there, we're not giving the public an opinion or time to, even though closed session is closed session, but, I, I hear your points, but, um, you know, it's not a matter that we're gonna.
Miss a deadline.
Pardon me?
We're not gonna miss a deadline by delays. Okay, so what I, what I'm gathering is that you, uh, the board, um, does not want to proceed with a second reading of bill number four seven zero one tonight, um, and that, that's okay. So we will reserve the second reading for our next meeting, which would be December eleventh, and, and so given that, um, the appointment of city administrator will wait until that meeting, so there will be no discussion on that topic tonight. And I would like to make a motion or a suggestion that we do have an opportunity for closed session on the next agenda for personnel. To discuss what? What do you mean? I said personnel.
He's requesting a closed session. Please put it on the agenda, Mayor.
If, if this is in regards to where this appointment is going, then, uh, let me, let me just say, I, I solicited feedback, we were all involved in that process. From that, I took your feedback and I have made a decision on appointment, it is my appointment, and not, no closed session is gonna change where I go with that.
The problem is not the appointment, there are some questions. Some personnel question about, uh, other organizations and stuff. I just want to get clear exactly what he is talking about. When that questioning.
Well, then that need, that would happen and then, then you can ask those questions, those questions can be asked in, in the public eye. I, I don't think there's a, any reason to go into closed.
No, it would be, same thing as having an interview, we don't have interviews in open session.
You can't.
Well, we don't.
We have already conducted the interviews and this is.
The initial interviews, and we have some more questions.
And I'm telling you that my appointment is, that I've.
And that's, and that's fine, Mayor. We're okay with that. We have some additional questions that we'd like to address and they're of a personal issue. So we'd like to go into closed session and discuss that.
We'll have to have further discussion on that prior to December eleventh on whether or not, you know, that, that warrants any kind of closed session discussion at this point.
And I don't mean to intrude in, in your prerogatives, but, you know, going to personnel is permissive for closed sessions, it's not mandatory. You don't have to have all those discussions in closed session. Same thing with litigation and any other topics, it's permissive. So there, there's an argument to be made that any discussions about the appointment of the city administrator, um, should be in, in open session, uh, because it's, it concerns the public. Now, currently, um, a candidate is, is an employee and so there, of course, you have a mixture of personnel, so it's, it's, it's up to, um, the group, you know, whether or not it's in open session or closed session, uh, but it doesn't have to be.
So we can just ask day and now, an open session here and your thoughts are on?
It's gonna be part of the closed session, so. Yeah, we, we're not gonna discuss, yeah, we're not gonna discuss the topic tonight. Um, if there's no, like I, like I mentioned, if there was no decision made on bill number four seven zero one, the following agenda item is, is not gonna be discussed tonight, so it will go on the next agenda. Okay?
I just have one question, then, Mayor. Was your, your decision to make an appointment, was that based on an overwhelming majority of the board's input?
There was a consensus among the board on the decision. There was a, a person that was selected first on a majority of the ballots, there was a person that came out, the same person came out ahead, if, no matter how you scored it from all of their, all of the feedback from the board of all. So, yes, sir.
Did your decision, how would I say, this, this ordinance here, did that have any weight with your decision? Wouldn't, you know?
Um, what exactly?
Maybe I didn't word that correctly.
Yeah, what do you, um.
If, you know, if this person, did we have to do this in order to make that person fit? I guess maybe that's the word I'm looking for.
The ordinance did need to be amended to.
Did we get the?
To ensure that our qualifications align with the appointment.
That was my question.
Yes, that, that would be correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, if there, so we are, we're gonna conclude our scheduled business, is there any other topic of discussion tonight amongst the board at this time? Okay. And before we adjourn, I'll, I'll wish Valley Catholic good luck tomorrow night in their district championship game, so hopefully they win and continue on. And since we will not see you, um, I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving and enjoys the holiday season, and we'll be back on December eleventh, same time, same place.
The clock we fixed.
We will fix the clock. adjourned.